I think I did. Okay, and we will call the meeting to order at seven oh two. And are there any first on the block is public hearings? I don't see anybody. Okay, so we'll. Move forward. Review of agenda and calendar. I don't have any. Updates necessarily. Does anybody else? Okay, moving on.
That's a good question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so it seems like this superintendent search committee is going to meet frequently for a long time. Do we, do we, do you want to? At some point, like? Do we want to just add that report to the, under the Union twenty eight as a perpetual thing until it's done or? And I, those, I think those are public meetings. So, once I have an idea of when they will all be. I can share that with you or Pam and. So that gets on there. I'll say that then. The next one is next Monday.
So I did add, um, under unfinished business updates, uh, agenda item superintendent search update. And then if you have the date, we can put it under future business too.
I, I. Yeah, the next one is next Monday, but I have a feeling it will be every Monday for a while.
Can I ask a question? Or maybe this is better saved for later. Are you using a firm or are you doing your own search?
I believe own, but I also believe that we are still very at the beginning of this conversation. Stay tuned. Oh, I will give an update later.
Okay, uh, moving on, um. Warren's?
Yep, so Trevor, Caitlin, uh, if you want to let me know, maybe if these match up or Caitlin, would you rather read? What you have off? I have them in front of me, so it's easy for me to read them.
I do too, but if you want to read them and then I'll just kind of look at them as I go and then I'm sure we'll be in sync.
Sure, sounds good. All right, so I have got, uh, batch three oh six payroll warrant. Um, uh, for ten, three, twenty-three in the amount of eighty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty and seventy-nine cents. Then I've got. One more payroll, which was batch number three oh eight for ten sixteen. And that was in the amount of eighty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight and ninety-six cents. And then for vouchers, I've got number three thousand nine. Uh, and that was in the amount of fifteen thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-four cents. And then thirty-ten in the amount of four hundred and thirty-two dollars even. I've got thirty-eleven for thirty-eight thousand, six hundred, thirty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. And I'm sorry, three thousand eight should have been at the top of that pile. It went to the bottom. Um, so I've got that one for twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five and seventy-nine cents.
Yeah, um, could you please repeat a couple of those? Um, I got confused with the last couple, so I have, um. Thirty-ten is four thirty-two even, and is there a date on that?
I'm sorry, I wasn't reading off the dates on the vouchers, so that one was ten seventeen.
Uh, great, and then, uh, do you have a date for the three thousand nine thirty-nine?
Yep, that also was ten seventeen.
Uh, thank you, and then, uh, thirty-eleven. Could you give me all that info, please?
That was on ten thirty-one and the amount was thirty-eight thousand, six thirty-three, twenty-six cents.
Thank you, and then, uh, thirty, is that thirty-twelve is twenty-three thousand, eight hundred, thirty-five and seventy-nine?
That was actually three thousand eight. I apologize, it went to the bottom of the pile, should have been at the top. So that was three thousand eight and that was from ten three.
Uh, right, and so it's two, three, eight, three, five, seven, nine.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those match the amounts that I have also. Awesome.
Hey, perfect, um, gifts. Okay, uh, grants.
So this is not a grant, um, but we did receive rural aid. And you'll be happy to know this year, Chutes Berry is receiving eighty-six thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-six cents. Up from thirty thousand dollars, nine hun- thirty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Although this is rural aid and not a federal or Massachusetts grant. Um, we're going to be required to report these funds as a grant expenditure on our end of year reports. So when I confirmed with, uh, Michelle Griffin at Desi, she said. Um, to follow procedure and have this voted in as a grant. So yay to eighty-six thousand, three hundred, seventeen dollars and ninety-six cents for rural aid. Would we like to accept that?
So moved.
I counted.
Okay, all in, Anna, do you have a question?
No, I was just gonna say, I. Do you have to roll call a synthetic virtual?
Yeah, typically when we do the roll call, it'd be Rose. Also, I'll start, Rose, I.
Anna, I.
Martell, I.
Taylor, I.
My, you, I.
Excellent. Um, approval of minutes from our September twenty-first meeting. Suzie, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about the rural aid. Um, I think it was, it was projected in the budget because we always have to guess. Uh, to come in at sixty thousand, so that's twenty-six thousand more than was projected. And then, um, are there any restrictions on how that money can be used?
Not usually, Suzie. Um, of course, they always suggest what they'd like it to be used for because it's the state, so. Robert O'Donnell, who works for Desi, said rural aid can be used for a wide variety of purposes. To support district operations, so those are really large parameters. With priority given to efforts to increase regional collaboration, consolidation, or other strategies. To improve long-term operational efficiency, but basically. As long as it supports our operation, we can use it in the budget however we so choose.
So let me ask the pointed question, could some of that money? Especially what was over what was projected, be used to meet the outer district cost?
So because we just found out about it on Tuesday, we haven't had that conversation, um, between the principal superintendent and I yet. Um, typically having, because of transportation for district is so high in this area, it probably does. Is pretty much in line with what you would want to use rural aid for because it is something that is. That, that we have as a, as a burden of, of the large transportation costs for students that are out of district, so. Um, it is a great idea, Suzie, and, but we just haven't had the conversation yet because we just.
No.
Two days ago.
Yeah, and other, other districts in Union twenty-eight have talked about supporting positions that were funded by Esser with rural aid. So I think we need to sit down, um, as an admin team and then a school committee and talk about ways to use the rural aid. But all of the above are possibilities.
And we also know that, uh, rural aid has been. Not a steady stream, um, it's kind of at the whim of what's going on. Um, we don't know for sure that it's going to continue to be, um, increasing. Um, and we don't know if it'll continue to be at eighty-six. Um, but I do know that the circuit breaker. To help support the cost of an out-of-district placement doesn't come in this, as far as I understand, doesn't come in this year. So it may be that this is the hard year and that when the circuit breaker pops in, um. The budget can be reorganized some, but that, that's all I know, that's all I am thinking about right now.
Jackie, go ahead.
You're muted.
This has to do with what we're talking about, just briefly, just want to remind people that we don't have Esser anymore and we have. Two really important people in our school being funded by Esser, and so there's some big decisions that need to happen. And that rural aid might be a good fit for that as well, so just throwing that out there.
Okay, any other discussion on, uh, rural aid before we move on? Okay, uh, moving on, we have approval of minutes, our September twenty-first, twenty twenty-three minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Any discussion or move forward with roll call? Okay, Rose, I.
Anna, I.
Taylor, I.
Martell, I.
My, you, I.
Thank you. Um, next on the agenda is, um, unfinished business and updates. So we have the capital projects and building process, any updates anybody wants to share? Okay, moving on, new business, uh, we have the family handbook, um, listed, I don't know. Um, I know that's a work in progress, so I don't know. Where we're necessarily at for today.
No, it's not ready.
Okay, still a work in progress, so we'll keep it on the agenda.
And after today's policy meetings, we might be adding to it, so hopefully by next month, we'll have it ready to go.
Okay, perfect. Okay, now into the report section, we'll start with the superintendent's report.
Yep, I'll be brief, um. For those of you who were not at Joint Supervisory, we had the results of the Operational Efficiency Study, which I did, um, share with. All of our committee members, um, and basically the recommendations were either bolstering leadership staff to oversee operational departments. Um, and implementing single contracts and policy manuals. Um, or the stronger conclusion from the report was considering a fully regionalized structure. The study felt that the individualized nature of Union twenty-eight would hinder efforts in operational and instructional areas. Um, and so one point of discussion at Joint Supervisory was thinking about a regionalization study. However, as Julie will talk about a little later in the meeting, there's also a superintendent search and so. The more imminent, um, focus is the search. Um, and I think a revisit of the efficiency study will come in the future. We've had some great professional development in Union twenty-eight. Between, um, union-wide safety professional development with, uh, Jim Carmichael, who's come back year after year. No matter where he's worked, whether for the state police or the, um, sheriff's department. Um, he did, uh, remote union-wide safety training for all of our staff. We've also had, um, some wonderful PD from the collaborative around, uh, social justice and equity, which is one of our focuses. And, um, we are also doing some literacy walkthroughs with our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Um, and she's building on the work we're doing with the Hill for Literacy, so that's great. And, um, just briefly, overall statewide, um. As we know, the MCAS results were released and statewide, we are seeing that there is continued academic recovery from the pandemic. Even though our, our, um, results are still lower than in twenty nineteen prior to the pandemic. We're seeing that English Language Arts and math scores were either level or improved in all grades across the Commonwealth. Um, there was an increase of two percentage points in, um. Elementary and middle school in mathematics compared to last year. And there was an increase in scores for English Language Arts statewide. Um, however, science scores decreased slightly, um, this year. Um, and I'm, but I was gonna say, and Jackie will talk about how wonderful Chutes Berry Elementary did, but overall. Statewide Massachusetts is seeing, um, slight improvement. And the next thing I think the state's going to be talking about is chronic absenteeism and, um, attendance at schools and we'll be working as a state. Um, with our local partners to make sure that we can increase school attendance. And that's my report for tonight.
Thank you. Any questions before we move on? Jen, go ahead.
Thanks, yeah, so I'm just wondering about what we're looking at in terms of chronic absenteeism and what's going to be. Implemented, if you have any idea, and I know it's kind of down the pike and it's not necessarily fully affecting us in Chutes Berry. Um, but also wondering about what Chutes Berry Elementary is doing specifically. As well, as a parent of a kid who is chronically absent for real illness, it's been really frustrating. On our end, um, because we have a kid that gets sick easily and tends to stay sick longer than other kids. And then.
So I can speak. Sort of in general, and then if Jackie wants to talk a little bit, I know it's also on our leadership, um, agenda for next week, but. The chronic absentee problem is not just here in Massachusetts, not just local, but really a national, um, problem. Um, rates are still high, there is of course resurgence in COVID and flu and RSV and so, uh. That is adding to the, the problem. Um, the commissioner is meeting with the board to talk about chronic absenteeism. Because they're seeing seventy-five percent of schools in Massachusetts are having that issue. Um, they're talking about giving funding to track attendance and intervene when necessary, they're calling it recovery academics. Um, their point of view from the state level anyways, not to blame or punish anybody, but working with families. Um, finding opportunities, um, to work with families and find different approaches. Um, Desi will be sending out a survey to superintendents, um, and so I think we're going to be hearing a lot more. About that and getting support from the state, and I don't know, Jackie, if you want to speak or you will in your principal report about this.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to it briefly now and then, I don't have to talk about it later, so, um. I mean, I, I wrote about this in the Road Town, I don't know, I hope you all read it. Um, but I, I'm putting together a letter because Chutes Berry does struggle with chronic absenteeism greatly and, um. I'll talk about how that impacted our MCAS scores, I mean, we still did well, but. Our absentee rate is really high and that really negatively affected our, our outcome. I mean, we still did very, very well, but it could have been a lot better and, um. It's really hard because for the last three years, um, we've been saying, don't come to school, don't come to school, like, don't even chance it, please don't come. And like, stay home, and you know, that was a shift from before where it's like a sniffle, come to school, you know, like. You can do it, like, I'm gonna speak for me as a parent, I'd be like, unless you're vomiting or have a fever, you're going. Um, and that really shifted and then it was very different, and then it was like, stay home, stay home, please stay home. Um, and now we're trying to come back and people are still in the mindset where like, eh, it's okay, you can just stay home, you can just stay home. And so we have to kind of maybe educate families again around like, what's an okay? Thing to come to school with and what's a not okay thing to come to school with and, um. When can I talk with Nurse Katie and maybe I should check in before I keep them home, but also like even things like. Um, reminders like, you know, taking a family vacation. You know, for a week and a half in, in March is not a great thing. And, um, I think you saw when I wrote, uh, in, in the, in the Road Town and it's going to be in my other letter too, it's like. Even three consecutive days in elementary school in particular, because it's like the foundation of stuff, like you could miss. A mini math unit or like a really important concept that you really needed to know and that it actually means a lot, so anyway. Um, what we normally do is our, um. My, me and the psych, but now we have a school counselor, um. We usually have attendance meetings with families and we make an attendance contract and we try to find ways to motivate if it's, if it's a not, like a student not motivated to come. We try to, you know, find ways to motivate them to come, whether it's like a positive behavior chart or prizes or. Lunch with favorite people or things like that, and if it's an illness thing, then we usually come together as a team and also then get releases to talk to doctors and help support. Things that way, um, and that's what we have done in the past. And we've kind of let things go for three years and now we have to kind of come back to that. And remind families like what the expectation is and that chronic means ten percent of the school year, which means eighteen days, that's a lot of days, that's like a month of school. That's missing an entire month of school. Um, and that's a lot of learning and, um. And so what I, what I hope is that people can try to keep it under ten. Obviously, if you're sick, you're sick and you need to be home, but like even ten days, that's two full weeks of learning, you know, it's a lot, so. Um, I think it's just, it's just more of just like information, like, okay. Here we are, we're back in the recovery and this is kind of our expectation as a school and this is what it means and we're here to help you. And we're, and if you're having a student that's not motivated to come to school, we need to know that, I mean, we usually do, we are a tiny school, we usually know that, but. Um, we need to make a plan to, to help them get here.
Julie, go ahead. You're muted.
You're muted.
There we go, sorry about that. This Zoom is new to me. Um, sorry about that, um, I was just thinking that I wonder if it would also be just helpful. Um, to like give a context of year over year, like to be able to show like back in two thousand, you know, to show over. Several years, like this is where it was at this point. This is like, this is the trend that's happening and this is why we're now addressing it as a community so that it's. More of a like, oh, I understand, like, wow, that's really different from before, so that we can. And I, and I just mean in an aggregate, just so that we can kind of see like, oh, this is what's happening together.
Yes, and then we can ease, you can find attendance rates pretty easy from our state reporting.
I wondered too, like you were speaking Jackie before too, I don't think a lot of people understand how attendance plays into accountability levels. And that might be something that's useful for people to understand and know as well as that, you know. MCAS scores look great, but attendance is another issue that really affects us overall.
Definitely. I'll talk about that in my, my report.
Okay, um, anything further before we move on to finance and operations? Now, looks good, all right, Caitlin, take it away.
Okay, so. Let me. Start with the end of year reports, they were due last month, ours was submitted on time. And I'm going to give you an overview of what it looks like. Um, and then afterward, I will need the committee to vote to allow the chair to sign the end of year certification statement. So, so I'm not great at Zoom, so I'm going to try to share. Okay, can you see the, the report? All right. So this is on the end of, the end of year port looks, um, the first part is revenues. Uh, revenues taken, tuition from individuals, that's the preschool ones. Um, then. There are all the other revenues, a lot of these are auto-populated from the state. Uh, which is really nice because like you have those numbers, it's great that you just put them in there for me because. I don't have to do it and you know, you know how much we're getting for certain things. After that comes reviews expenditure summary by school committees, these are all the things in our local budget. Uh, school committee superintendent and. Business and finance. Legal counsel settlements. Um, curriculum directors. And these are all, all those little numbers go, so. Every year kind of have to break down everything we've spent for an entire year and put them all into it, so like. Medical therapeutic services, that's like OTPT speech. Um, substitutes. And. Then at the end of this, and oh, then there are all the supply lines. Um, software. Testing and assessment amounts. Psychologist. And then food service, this is all just stuff coming from the local budget. And then at the end of it. Well, into this part is here's the expenditures per town, the only thing with the town. Um, or one of the things from the town is the people transportation, since that doesn't live in our budget, it lives in the town's budget. But we report on it. And then, um, insurance for active employees, for retired school employees, other school insurances. Payments to other districts like school choice, charter school. The blue was the one, there was the ones that are auto-populated from the state. And then we get to revenue expenditure summary from grants, so all of our grant expenditures get put into this portion. Since we're not a regional school, this regional school assessment does not get filled out because we're, we're municipality. And then Schedule Three is instructional expenditure, so specific to how much we're spending for. Teachers, curriculum directors, um, technology. All of the stuff, if you've noted, if you've ever looked at the, you know, of course you've looked at the budget, but when, when you look at the budget, we break things down in those pieces on purpose. So that there's an administrative part and there's the instructional part because. Um, that's how it fits with the Desi codes and it fits into the reporting, so a lot of these things go right into the, um. The budget structure that we use. Instructional expenditures from grants. And then special education expenditures specifically by placement, they have a break us down by three to five-year-olds, preschool kids versus the older kids. So we kind of use a proportion of how much we pay, um, someone in the supervisory role for preschool versus. The K through six kids. And then the transportation, although we don't, um, that comes from the town's budget, we still have to break out how many kids live within. And outside of a one and a half mile radius. Because we're reimbursed, the town is reimbursed for students that live outside of a mile and a half radius. And. Then vocational programs still apply. Non-public transportation, we didn't have those expenses. And then annual, oh, so then it goes into this year's budget, so we have already reported on all the expenditures from last year's budget. And now here are all the amounts for the current FY twenty-four budget for the, the school. And then by the city and town, what they have budgeted also. And then estimated revenues, again, regional school stuff and expenditure summary for everything. So. That's the end of your port, we have other tabs for, say, Schedule Eighteen where the. The state collects information about the teacher's contract for this year and other years within the teacher's contract. And every amount in here is to the best of my knowledge, I did sit with Karina Whistlow because we were. Um, we were just short on, um. On maintenance of effort, which is what we, we need to spend more than we did in the previous year to be able to. Be able to receive the, the full amount for IDEA and Title One grants. And what we found was that we had some. And what we found was that we had some positions that we were unable to fill. And so that's why we fell just short of that, but the, that is one of the exceptions you can use from the state to be able to still make maintenance of effort. All right. And that is the end of your report. Are there questions about the end of your report or?
A lot of spreadsheets.
That's a, it's an enormous spreadsheet, it takes longer than normal to download every time I open it.
It looks like Suzie has a question.
Um, is that? Um, I, yeah, I don't think you need to send it to me, you probably just need to send me to the right website on. The DESE or the right heading for whatever that's called. But I'd like to look at it.
Oh, do you want to look at the end of your report?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can send it to you directly.
Okay, okay, we'll do it that way.
As long as you're okay with it in expel, uh, Excel format, because uh, that's the only way that their little functions work.
That's fine for me, thanks. And is the enrollment number involved in that? It must be, the number of kids.
Yes, and the transportation and I think in one other tab. Um, when it calculates, you know, per pupil expenditures and um, and does some other calculations.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, and you need a vote to allow me to sign that, correct?
Yeah, to sign the certification statement.
I move, I moved that Bethany has accepted to uh, sign the certificate.
Second.
Okay, Rose, I.
Heard I.
Taylor, I.
Martell, I.
Perfect, and Caitlin, will you email me or get in touch with me about where you want me to?
Yes, yep, there's, yep, I can do that. So uh, I have two other parts of my report. The Union twenty eight budget update, uh, the, the budget personnel subcommittee met on October tenth before the joint supervisory committee meeting. The subcommittee voted to accept the Union to the FY twenty five, Union twenty eight budget and pass it along to the joint supervisory committee who also voted to accept the budget. District allocations were calculated after the October one enrollments came in, these were preliminary allocations. Um, the allocation for Chutesberry came in at twenty two point one six percent. Which is a decrease of point four nine percent from last year's twenty two point six five percent allocation. But before the numbers are certified, that could change a little bit here or there, we even had a change earlier this week. This is the most up to date number is a twenty two point one six percent allocation. So the way that the uh. Two years ago, the joint supervisor committee voted to move to a five year rolling out average to calculate allocations. This year is the um, the averages of FY twenty three, twenty four and twenty five enrollments. Each year will contain an additional fiscal year um, until, you know, so next year it will be FY twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six. And then twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, and then by FY twenty eight, it will start to do that roll. The uh, I'll be presenting the FY twenty five Chutesberry Elementary Draft Budget at the November sixteenth meeting. So now that we have the Union twenty eight budget numbers, those are embedded and I can start meeting with the superintendent principal. And we will have a draft of the budget for the November meeting. Finally, we already talked about rural aid, but just how amazing it is. Um, the state came out with the rural aid distribution on Tuesday. Uh, it is a sizable increase um, for FY twenty one, it was twenty five thousand, or sorry. Yeah, FY twenty one was like twenty five thousand nineteen dollars and six cents and then twenty two was twenty two thousand eight hundred and forty six dollars sixty three cents. Last year FY twenty three was thirty thousand nine hundred and sixty seven dollars. And then this year's is big increase for FY twenty four eighty six thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety six cents. And we're very grateful uh, to have that rural aid. And that's all of my report.
Suzie, did you have a question?
Yep, a couple of things, um. We'd like to do the same approach we did last year where I'll be in on the November sixteenth um, meeting. And you can um, send me the draft budget ahead of time and then I'll be able to listen to you walk through it. And then I'll share it as a draft with the FinCom members and ask them to, you know, they'll ask me a lot of questions. And I'll try to answer them and then I will make a list, I will list their other questions and send them um, out to Caitlin. And we'll gather responses. Um, we looked at our schedule and I remembered, it's kind of amazing, that last year. We meet on the Tuesday of the week that you all meet on Thursday, and so we had that problem and it wasn't an approved budget. In January, when we had our scheduled meeting on the sixteenth. I, I mean, we will have it scheduled for the sixteenth, so we talked about moving our meeting. With the school committee to be January thirtieth. And I believe the way things roll, you'll be able to have a finish your um, process and approve that budget. Um, I don't think it, it doesn't matter to me if it's actually approved yet, but it kind of works better. If that's what is, is your plan, if, if you've already decided that's the plan. So um, so we would like to meet with um, Caitlin and whoever wants to be involved. Usually the chair was there, I don't know that many other members came, but um, on January thirtieth to. Present to the FinCom the approved budget and um. Let's see. I think those are those, oh. Yeah, the other question we had is um, is the teacher contract timeline worked out? So we have a sense of when that will be um, going forward. I don't, I think somebody from personnel gets on that, I'm not, I don't know, that's not something I've done before. But um, I, I don't know when the teacher contract and of course, people are asking, they want to know what the timeline for that is.
Yeah, I can say it's always a challenging year to budget when we don't have a contract for the following year. Um, I, I think that we're in a good place that we're doing this early um, and having the draft in November. However, that means that we don't have um, have a sense of where the, the next contract's going to go. So. I, we would have November, December and January meetings before January thirtieth. Um, but that also leaves a lot of time during the year that things can change um, student wise and with needs of the students. And with, with the contract, so um. I, I'm not sure what the, the schedule, the timeline of negotiations are. Um, but we'll be right there to kind of budget around it as necessary.
And luckily, this is not something I'm in charge of, so I can't tell you the timeline. Lucky you.
Anna, did you have a question?
Who's in charge? School committee, you.
Yeah, usually we hear from the um, LEA, the local bargaining, the local educational um, association. They notify the school committee who's the other negotiating agent that they are ready to bargain. And um. Typically, so we may want to put it on the November agenda, you would nominate. And vote in two members to be on the negotiating subcommittee. And then you work with Adam Dubere, our attorney. To begin the negotiations.
Can we push them to start the process as soon as possible?
Um, uh, we can remind them that we're waiting to um. Hear from them regarding negotiations, so I can, I can reach out on your behalf. Um, and just ask the union president um. To reach out to the school committee and let them know they're ready to begin negotiations, if you'd like me to do that.
That'd be great.
And then would you like me to put on the November agenda then um? For us to nominate two members to this negotiating subcommittee? Okay, I'll put that under future agenda items.
Hey, anything else before we move to principals report?
Okay, we will move to principals report. Okay, I'll be. Try to be fast since we've talked, I've talked a lot already. Um, so we had open house, I was not there, but many of you were. I unfortunately could not be there, but it was. From what, from all the accounts that I heard, it was a fantastic time, it's my, one of my favorite days of the year, so I was very sad to miss it. Um, and um, I'm really proud of our school and obviously in terms of like our. Um, achievement and our culture, but also really like really proud of how nice it looks inside. Um, you know, it's what we have control over, we have control over the inside, we, I have a hard time having control over the outside. Just because it's more capital planning things, so we, I mean, I think you probably saw it, it's like really clean, it's really put together, we've done. We've gotten rid of a lot of clutter, so it's a really nice learning space for everybody. Um, so um, some happy things is the, the big kids went apple picking on Leonard Road. It's a thirty plus year tradition, then they make apple treats from the apples that they pick. And um, sell them at an apple store, but actually treats, not electronics. Um, for this, for the school and it always goes over very well and um, it was a success again, a smashing success. Uh, we have the fourth graders who are actually taking because of COVID their first field trip ever in their life. Um, and they're going to uh, the Byzans, the Byzanski Museum in, in Amherst. Um, which is really exciting and it's. You know, it's sad to think that they're in fourth grade and taking their first trip, but just because of everything with. Everything that went on, that's just how the cookie crumbled, so it's happening and we're really excited about it. Fourth grade and fifth grade will also get to go to the UMass Multibands Concert, Mr. Cortina arranges that. Um, it's wicked fun, I don't know if you have ever been, but it's really a blast. Um, including like the entire marching band on, on the stage at one point, it's really fun. Um, and that's happening in November. Every single day I probably get asked, no joke, six times if we're gonna have a play this year from the kids. Um, and the answer is, we're gonna have a play, it's, it's just gonna be a little different. So last year I was the artist in residence, so I spent. A lot of time making that happen, I cannot be the artist in residence every year, unfortunately. So, but what I, what I can do is um, Mr. Cortina are, and I are working together. To kind of come up with a different structure where we could still have a whole school performance, but it might not be every kid and every song. Um, and every dance, so we have an idea and there's gonna be something. And the parents are asking too, it's just, it's not gonna be everyone on stage the entire time. With everything, but it's gonna be great, it's gonna be great. Um, so in terms of you, um, UMass, in terms of MCAS. So we did last year, as you know, we did, we, we, we performed the best in the, the entire state. And that's not me, like, it's not trying to sound snobby, but we actually did. So what's really hard is when you go from being literally the top performing school in the state. In both achievement and student growth and you're a tiny school. It's really hard to like better yourself, um, and because we're so small. It's like if two kids have a bad day, I'm not even joking, if two kids have a bad day taking a test. That actually is really hard, so um. So we did outperform the state in all areas, which is fabulous. Um, and we did very well and we still have an accountability rating of an eighty, which is what we had last year, which is very high. Um, and we're really excited about that, but we would have been even higher. Um, and, and possibly have ranked the, the best was um, is, is our attendance. And so uh, you get from zero to four points um, for chronic absenteeism. And we got zero out of four points. So um, and then that, that equates into, you can go on to the D E profile and see it yourself. Um, but it equates into like how much of a percentage in terms of more points we got, and we got zero on that. So um, you know, it's kind of like what Jeremy said, it does, I mean luckily, we perform very strongly. Um, in academics and particularly my favorite student growth, which is. A formula that shows how a particular student grew in terms of an average to their cohort of like testing kids. In a year, um, and you want to see above forty on that and our, our student growth is high, it's in like in the sixties. And so, and a lot of our kids have student growths every year of like eighties and nineties, like really high. Um, so they're, they outperform their liked peers that they get put into their little cohort across the state. Um, when they're like in third, in their third grade testing year. And I look at that as the most important thing, personally, I care more about the growth of our students and not necessarily. Their, their actual performance, although that's important, I'm more interested in the growth. Um, and um, we did well in all of that, so yay, we're, I mean, it's one test. It's one test and we do not teach to the test and we are, we're not like a drill and kill school, we don't do anything like that, we make sure they're prepared. But um. But you know, a lot rides on it when you're a public school, so we continue to do really well and um. It's because we have like the best teachers, and I've been saying this to everybody, the best teachers. Like could be a model school, I could, I, we just had, and this leads me into my next bullet, which is. Um, we did a learning walk uh, this week actually with the director of curriculum and some representatives from other um, union schools. And what we're trying to do is. Let uh, some of the teaching staff get into other schools too, to see what's going on in the other buildings and um. In Chutesbury, the focus we were looking for in this particular learning walk is we're doing a new literacy program, which a lot of you know, which is called EL. And I wanted to observe the launch of the tier one lesson, so tier one means what all the kids are receiving. Like they're the, 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 all of the kids are receiving this base instruction. And um, I wanted to see the launch of the lesson in this new curriculum. Um, and it was really awesome, I do have to say. Um, it was phenomenal in terms of uh, the engagement of the students. Um, the incredible talent of our teachers, you, you know, our guests were just like astounded. At what they saw from the teaching staff and from the kids and their engagement. Um, and it was, it was really great, so that's something we're doing as a union, that's really, really fun. Um, and uh, the one thing I did want to bring up to this, to this uh, group. Is that our enrollment is low, our enrollment is very low right now, it's like one fifteen. And last year we were at one twenty three, so and then when I started ten years ago, we were at one fifty nine. So um, and this is with the addition of um, school choice into our building. And so I just want the committee to know, I um, it's a slippery slope, do I have? I, I accept school choice if there's less than fifteen students in the class. And if the class's makeup is such that we could invite in other students. If it's a tricky cohort or cohort filled with a lot of need, it might not be the right time to even invite more kids in. Um, so and that's, I've been very clear since we started doing this, like that's, that's my intent. And I also do not accept school choice students above third grade, usually unless they're a sibling of a student. That I accept in a lower grade. So those are the parameters I have used and the reason why our enrollment is so low. In my non-expert opinion, is because there's no houses in Chutesberry for people to buy. Um, and I mean, we lost five students this year because they were renters of shoot, houses in Chutesbury. That those people. that those people were no longer gonna rent that house and there was nowhere for them to go. They did not necessarily want to leave, um, but uh, they didn't really have a choice. So um, that's like the biggest issue is like there's, I mean, you can probably go on right now. There's like no houses for sale and the ones that are for sale are, they're like a million, they're like really expensive houses. So um, that's kind of what it is. It's not like we're like bleeding students to other schools or, or, or whatever. It's like our, a lot of our families have aged out and the parents are still living here and they don't have little kids to send to the elementary school. So I mean, that's really where we are and it's a reality and we'd like to have more students. Um, uh, but we don't right now. So I just want this committee to know that number. It, it's been making me a little nervous. I don't wanna just start like accepting every single application that comes at me for school choice, cuz that is not always good for culture either. And also that's, I don't wanna be like Pelham where like over half of our kids are school choice. Like there's a whole other mess that's involved with that. So um, unfortunately I can't like start building houses and like inviting people to come. Um, I'm trying, doing the best I can with attracting families that, you know, embrace the values that our community embraces in terms of coming to the school for some school choice that, that works, that makes sense. But um, that's where we are and um, I just really kind of wanted you to know that because I know in the budgeting season, just because we have one hundred and fifteen students doesn't mean that like we shouldn't have an adjustment counselor, right? And so then what happens is, is like the town's like, well, you only have a hundred and fifteen students. Well, those kids still need an adjustment counselor, right? They still need a fourth grade teacher and they still need to have music and they still need a principal and a nurse. So um, it just gets tricky, uh, but uh, I did want that to be in your mind as um, a challenge that's, that's going on.
Suzie, go ahead.
So Jackie nailed all the issues that will come out of this. Um, some people call it poaching um, students from other towns. And there's, you know, the way this thing is, the way the finances are set up, people view that pretty negatively. Um, and so a couple of numbers that I know people in the finance committee have already talked about is the enrollment history, which we got one last year and we'll need it for this year. Um, and out of those hundred and fifteen students, do you know how many of those are choiced in students?
Not off the top of my mind, but a decent amount.
Okay, and then the other flip of that is, do you know how many students in Chutesbury are choiced out to other towns? So those kind of numbers are gonna be.
There's more, more charter. Charter, right. Choice. You know what I mean? There's more kids that would be like at the Chinese immersion school or something like that. Um, not as many like choice to other public.
All right. And so I don't know who has those kind of numbers, but that's gonna be part of the grist for figuring stuff out. Um, I, we, we've been looking at the regional um, chapter seventy money and trying to understand the formula. And kind of apart from foundation money is the charter um, and choice formulas that the state uses for aid and for charging schools and all of that. So it, it's gonna, I think, gonna end up being more of the discussion this year because the foundation formula is not very, um, is not something you can adjust. But politically we might need to start uh, addressing how charter um, figures into everybody's budget. And of course we have s- some people wanting to know how choice money gets involved in budgeting.
And also, this is why I would also recommend to the committee to really take those, um, the recommendations that the Collins Center put out. I mean, this is like another reason why those recommendations seem to be seriously considered because enrollment at all of our schools are, is not, I mean, there's one that's high, but the rest are lower.
And to answer Suzie's question, the school attending children report um, is a report we do and that says where all the children, all the students in a town um, attend school and we do it for each town K through twelve. That's done in February, so we would have last year's numbers now. We wouldn't have next year's numbers until spring. Or this year's numbers until spring.
Great. And, and could I get that from the superintendent's office then? Is that where those numbers are kept?
They're at Desi under school attending children, but I can um, I can check in with Pam. Like, if you can't find it, check in with me and I can have Pam Rogers send it to you.
Nope, yeah, I, I want our committee to understand that Desi's out there for them to search too.
Okay.
If you have questions, you can get some of the answers yourself if you know where to go. So I'll tell them it's in the children attending report on Desi.
Yeah, school attending children report.
Oh, school attending children, school attends the children. Okay, right.
I, I didn't name it. I just know it.
So state-like, isn't it? Oh, my God.
Okay, um, if nothing else, we'll move forward to the Amherst Pelham representative update.
So uh, we too are in full swing on our superintendent search. Um, we got an update on five MCAD complaints. Um, which are all in slightly varying stages of process. Three of them have been assigned to one lawyer and two of them have been assigned to another lawyer. And the three that are assigned to one lawyer are a little bit linked to each other. Um, so um, the lawyers reported that they don't see super strong cases in any of them really. Um, but one particular case um, has like larger weight behind it maybe, even though it's not any more legitimate than the others. So we'll just, we're just, at this point, we're just hanging out, waiting to see what happens with them. We got a bunch of new members. Um, so uh, Amherst appointed people to replace all the people who quit. And um, so that's fun. We've uh, actually, it's created a lot more diversity on the school committee. So that's been really nice. Um, we have Roger, and I'm totally blanking on his last name.
Wallace.
Wallace. And we have Kate. Oh geez, I'm, I don't know anybody's last name cuz it's just like Roger, Kate, Gabriella and um, they were the most recent additions and then um, I, I guess William replaced. Uh,
Tom Fanning.
Sarah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, Tom, well, yes, William replaced Tom Fanning on the committee a little while ago. And um, so it's been, now we have different chairs. So now we have Sarah Best as the Chair of the Regional School Committee and Irv Rhodes as the committee, as the Chair of the Union Twenty-Six Committee. And we've been having these joint committee meetings about superintendent search and other things that um, so I think we're, we're ironing out some glitches and trying to get used to new leadership and new leadership styles. And we've been having really, really long meetings. So I think that's about it. Oh, I mean, we got a little short update on the Title IX investigation. Uh, we had a, uh, an executive, we went into executive session about one particular report. We can't say anything at all. Really, it's all personnel issues. And so it all goes into personnel files. It's been really, very frustrating to not be able to talk about it publicly. But uh, Doug Slaughter, the superintendent, the interim superintendent is going to try to put together a report that kind of lays out the failures and um, the things that like didn't happen and or did happen that shouldn't have happened and all the things that should have happened but didn't happen. Um, but in a way that doesn't like name particular names or particular circumstances and try to put together sort of like a way forward, like what do we need to fix so that this is unlikely to happen in the future? So we're looking forward to that report. He said maybe two weeks, so we'll see.
Okay, um, thank you. And so we've moved out of the um, public hearing portion, but I see that Mary Lou has her hand up. Um, we're happy to listen to your comment, um, if you wish.
Okay, hi, my name is Mary Lou Conca. Um, I was actually going to ask Anna to report on the Title IX investigation. Um, I appreciate what you shared, but I still have a question. And I'm curious to learn if ever that you, uh, you know, have a feeling about, will the general public have its view on this report? Do you think it'll ever go out to the public so that we as a body can know what's going on? I mean, I understand the part of the personnel and, you know, protecting people's privacy. But all these people are in public positions and, you know, I, I think we have a little bit of a right.
No.
No, there is.
Sadly, Suzie's correct. We don't.
Huh?
We don't?
No, it's so sad.
Was that Suzie?
I, yeah, I.
Yeah, thank you.
I absolutely am with you on this one. I, I agree that this should be this way. However, it is not this way. It is legally um, not, we are legally not able to release much of the information because it is considered personnel and it goes into personnel files. If we redacted everything that needed to be redacted out of the reports, it would be incomprehensible. You would not be able to understand the situation or what happened because so much of it would be redacted that it, it no longer means anything. So um, what I will say is we are not gonna be able to release anything that is going to be appreciated by the public. The public is forever going to be disappointed in what we are gonna be able to release. I am disappointed in what we're able to release. Um, but it is what it is. And so the best we can do is this report that Doug is gonna be putting together. I think what's really important from this whole situation is that if people are found to have um, harmed children and if people have been found to not have done their jobs appropriately, that they should no longer be working in the system. We're not gonna get a report that says so-and-so was fired because of the Title IX report. That's, and we're, and Doug is never gonna be able to say, I have fired X, Y, and Z because of the Title IX report. And definitely not anything more specific like, I fired so-and-so because the Title IX report said blah, 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 blah. That is not gonna happen. If you are desperate to know whether someone is still working for the district, you can call superintendent up and say, does so-and-so still work for the district? And he can say yes or no, but he cannot say apparently legally whether they were fired or why they were fired. So he can't, so he can't say why they were fired and he can't even say that they were fired. He could just say they no longer work for the district. So that's super frustrating for the public and, you know, I've been getting emails frequently, asking for more clarity and more transparency and for the reports to be released. And sadly, legally, we can't do it. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Anna.
Okay, um, so we'll jump next to the Union Twenty-Eight Report. Um, some of it was, we've already touched on a little bit, um, but I did wanna start with um, an email that we received um, recently, and I just wanna make everyone aware that um, the Irving School Committee has voted to appoint members um, to study the pros and cons of leaving Union Twenty-Eight. Um, which of course will, depending on which way it that goes, it will impact us. Um, so that is definitely something that we need to stay um, focused on and aware of. Um, and hopefully it will continue to be part of the joint supervisory agenda as we move forward. Um, so hopefully more to come on that.
And we were all encouraged to consider attending those public meetings, if only to listen and be able to understand that.
Anna, go ahead.
Does anyone understand what their motivation for potentially leaving the union is? Or is this just, nobody has any idea and once we maybe start going to the meetings, we'll figure it out?
I don't have enough of an idea to speak to it. Not in any appropriate manner.
I don't know if it would be a good use of our time either. Okay, to be honest, to speculate.
Um, so we did meet, um, the joint supervisory did meet. The good news is, is that we were able to elect a Chair and Vice Chair um, of that committee. Um, which was fantastic. And then in even better news, we were able to move forward and elect members from the joint supervisory committee to um, spearhead the superintendent search. Um, Julie is representing um, Chutesbury. Um, and she will give an update cuz they have started meeting, so she will give us an update on that. Um, and then, yeah, the rest of the meeting, Jen has already covered in her piece. And um, we've already covered budget. So Julie, if you wanna give us an update on the superintendent search.
To be clear, we have met once, on Monday, seven years ago, on Monday. Um, so I'm happy to tell you what we discussed, which was not a ton, but here I go. Um, so Stephen Butler, who is also Chair of Union Twenty-Eight Supervisor Committee, was voted as search committee chair. Um, committee members, there will be committee members from each town's school committee, each town's PTO, um, a staff member from each school. There is, man, I just lost my train, train. Hold on. Um, Gillian Boudin will serve as the central administrator and I think they're still looking for um, a staff person from Central to join. I don't know if Jen, you might know if.
I, I think they're just gonna go with Gilly. Um, because there wasn't another volunteer.
Okay, um, and then, so from Chutesbury, we have Viva Butler, um, education support professional. We have Elizabeth Murphy, PTO, and myself. Um, and we, we're actually the only town who had all three of those members filled in at that meeting. So yay, yes. Um, let's see, so um, so Stephen, who's chairing that committee, has spoken to M A, M A S C Executive Director Glenn Kutcher, who will, along with Tracy Novak, who's a field director, attend the next meeting of the search committee, which will be next Monday. We haven't actually talked about how often or for how long we will be meeting as a search committee, but I feel like this is a marathon and I feel like we're probably gonna meet weekly until we have hired someone for the position. That's just my guess, but that was the sense that I was getting. Um, which is fine. It seems like we can all meet on Monday night. So I, I think that probably moving forward, we'll mostly just be meeting every weekend, Monday nights. Um, let's see. So um, M A S C, so they're willing to discuss and help with advertising the position on school spring. So um, M A S C, so they're willing to discuss and help with advertising the position on school spring. Any additional promotional materials and resume collection. Um, we talked about how we would all like to review the current position description. And we've asked that um, Pam and Jen um, just review that and see if that probably might need to be updated.
Check, done.
Yay. Um, okay. Um, so we've created a Google folder to share our information. Um, and we're all just getting access to that. Um, it seems like I will have a lot of homework and have a lot to read through before our next Monday night meeting. Um, and the next meeting, after we individually review the materials, we'll begin to discuss what the qualifications and criteria required for superintendent would be. Uh, what would be included in our application, what's our timeline and how often and when will we meet as a committee? So again, really just the beginnings of a marathon. And I think I will have a lot of movement in between our school committee meetings. So I don't, I think that I will just save up that information and report out in each monthly committee meeting. So for sure, for the next, I would say four months meetings, I would probably just be reporting out on this under the Union Twenty-Eight. Months. Well, I mean, I don't, I, yeah, I kind of think so, don't you? Maybe. I do think so. I'm not lying. It's, I, yeah, I really feel like I'm in it for the long haul, so. But I can do it.
Thank you, Julie.
And that's, that's all I have for now. Does anyone have questions of which I may not be able to answer, but I am happy to find the answers for you? Yeah.
Hey, um, so we'll, thank you. And moving on to the um, the CES report from Jeremy.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really, I don't need to take up much time with CES. We did our reorganization. I'm on the warrant committee down there. I thought I was all done with committees. Um, they just keep multiplying. Uh, there wasn't much else really to talk about. There was a lot of time devoted in our last meeting to um, the Beacon Program that CES runs truly doesn't affect us much, but it's for high school students who are in danger of um, dropping out. And it's a half day program where they spend half the time, mostly at Greenfield Public School right now. Uh, but at their sending schools and then they go on to, to GCC where they learn entrepreneurship and a lot of other skills. And I forwarded that to the members of the committee. You guys can look at that if you're interested. Um, but that was basically the extent of our meeting. It was short and sweet.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving on, we have policy reviews. So this is just the first reading on on three policies. So if I understand this correctly, we're not voting on these tonight. It's just the first reading. Um, I'm thinking everybody can read these on their own and we don't need to read them out loud together.
I don't think so. I did find a typo in one of them that I just realized. It's on the uh, the BDFA dash E. Um, it's like the second paragraph, it just says reviewed by of. And it doesn't make sense. So I think there must be like a typo in there. That just needs to be reworded.
I, I think probably with a little bit of a typo, yes. Reviewed by of.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make sure the um, mistake is taken care of.
No problem.
Okay, so I'll just ask that everybody read those and be prepared for next um, meeting. Um, and then moving on to, so for future business, um, the policy committee will be meeting again on November sixteenth at six thirty. Our next school committee is November sixteenth at seven. Um, joint supervisory is November twentieth. Um, so those are future items. Um, along with Julie and her superintendent meetings. Jen, go ahead. Do you have a question?
Thanks. I just wanted to let everybody know that capital planning is trying to put together a meeting before November first. I just learned today. Um, so they are thinking, I guess sometime next week, we're gonna meet, but just so you have a heads up. Some kind of report by our next meeting.
Perfect. Maybe we could also just um, see if we can find out maybe the next um, Irving Pro-Con meeting date and share that in the emails and it when and if I know a schedule of the superintendent search, I will share that via email just so if you guys want to attend, you can.
They, they are supposed to be public meetings, the Pro-Con, so they should be posted, but I will have Pam check in on that. Um, and we can share out to the chair who then can, or I can share out with the committee.
Can I ask one other question that just came up while I was reviewing the school council policy? Are those, those are public meetings too, according to this policy?
That, yeah, it's a change in the, from the old policy that they're supposed to be posted as public meetings and they're supposed to follow the open meeting law.
Right, that's what I saw and I thought, I don't know if we're doing that or I, I don't, I don't know.
I think that is, that's a diff- that's a difference from the previous policy. So once that policy is approved, we'll just make sure that those are posted.
Okay. I just find it interesting because it's not even elected people. I mean, it could be, we just never end up having enough people for there to be any sort of election. So I think
I guess I'll talk with you. I'll talk with you. Okay.
I wanted to point out, if we're about to adopt a policy, that we have open meetings, we should probably have them be open. And if we, for some reason, don't
That's gonna be a shift for all of the schools, all of them.
Yep.
I feel like I brought
Pam, Pam can always help with those postings because she posts all the other meetings too. She sends them over to the town, so. Yeah, we'll try not to overburden the principals.
Yeah.
As Jackie puts her hand to her head.
Sorry, Jackie.
It's another thing. It's just another thing.
I just imagine too that it can be hard, the open meeting law with people who are volunteering and, you know, that can feel that feels daunting for me as a new school committee member. I can only imagine how that
And like staff members, you know? Yeah.
Jen, I mean, is it a thing that we could like, do we have to adopt this new policy? Like, can we say, like, is it possible that we can say that we'll post when the date is and that we'll share notes in Roadtown News or something like? I, I, I mean, I feel like the policy committee in general really looks at what M A S C does and then adopts it for our own community. And sometimes we've chosen to go with our shoots very spirit and do the things that we have done, the way that we have done as a community instead of adopting a state policy as received. I don't know. I'm just saying, I, I don't, it's not
I will check with legal counsel just so we don't get ourselves into trouble, but I will check on that one. Um,
And anyone's always, I mean, I would never ban someone from, like, anyone's welcome to attend, but.
Yeah.
And maybe posting can be as simple as it's in the Roadtown before. I don't know, but I'll check in with Adam and let you all know.
Okay.
A phone number that's not going to be used after June anymore, but is on speed dial under my favorites right now.
Okay, um, anything further before we adjourn? Yeah, okay. If we don't have anything else, then move to adjourn at eight twenty-one.
Seconded.
Thank you all. Have a good evening. Nice to see everyone.
Good night, everyone.